You're listening to Good Morning Gwinnett, a division of Noise Media Network. Hosted by Audrey Bell Kearney. Sharing stories about people and places around beautiful Gwinnett County and beyond. Monday through Thursday at 10 a.m. Southern Living at its best.
Good morning, good morning, good morning all my Gwinetians out there in Gwinnett land and all of you around the world listening to the sound of my voice. It is, when I tell y'all beautiful, it is a beautiful day here in Gwinnett County. Fifty-six degrees going up to a high of seventy-one, y'all in December, yes. It is lovely and I'm happy to be here with you this morning. I hope you're having a wonderful Thursday. I am. It's Thursday, December the second. Yes, it is. Um, and it's a beautiful Thursday. It is a beautiful Thursday. It is and I'm glad to be with you guys. You know, today's my Friday, so I got a show for you then I'm off, but I'm not off. Like, I'm not, I'm off from the show. But I'm not off from work because I got a few clients that I'm working with right now that I have to put some things in place. I got a new TV channel launched for a client on the Noise Media Network. I gotta get ready for the, ooh, for the show on Sunday. Y'all know we do a show called Popcorn Politics on Sunday. It's streamed live on American One Radio, it's streamed live on LinkedIn, YouTube, Facebook and Roku. That show is gonna be popping in a few minutes. I'll tell you why. Because it's a lot going on in politics here in Georgia. And I make, you know, it make that stuff excites me. But anyway, anyway, right now, we gonna get on with this show and I'll talk about why I'm excited about Sunday's show on the other side. So let's kick it off. Alright, today is December the second. National Special Education Day. National Special Education Day. That's, that's a great day. You know, I was talking to somebody, I was listening to somebody speak. Oh God, who was it? Um, I was listening to somebody speak recently and they're, they're really well-known. I can't think of who it was though. But they're really well-known, um, doing amazing thing in, things in the business world and said that he was supposed to be in special ed, but because his mom was like, no way, we're not doing it, um, he was not in special ed. And what happened was, he was bored. And so what, my brother is a national special education, um, uh, he has a degree in special edu-, he has a master's in special education. And he told me before he had, he said, I had this kid in his class, I think that he was like in the sixth grade or something. He was extremely smart, right? So what he was learning in school was boring. So my brother said what he would do is, he would have him fix computers during his class time and he, he excelled at that. So the, the things that he was studying were not things that he was interested in, plus it was like below his thought level, right? So when things are below people's thought level sometimes, they think it's special education and it probably is. But instead of putting them back, they need to level them up. So, um, my brother is, has a master's in special education. He's been doing it for years. And he told me that. I was like, wow, that's interesting that, you know, the kid would do extremely well fixing computers. Now let me just say this. Because I fixed computers before. It's not hard, I mean, that's not easy, right? It's not easy to go in and find a problem and figure out what the problem is and then fix the problem. So that's not an easy task. So that, that takes a high intelligent level person to do that or someone that can learn. So I thought that was pretty interesting. Alright, it's also National Mutt Day. I, when I think of a mutt, I think of a dog that's a, a crossbreed between some other dogs that were mutts. So it's National Mutt Day. Show a mutt some love, y'all. Mutts need love too. They do, they do. It's National Fritters Day. I don't care, know what kind of fritters you want. Shrimp fritters, crab fritters, you know, Dunkin' Donut fritters, apple fritters. It's National Fritters Day. Whatever fritter you eat today, do not eat too many. That's all I'm gonna say. Do not eat too many. Don't gorge out on the fritters, especially if it's like apple fritters, because that's a whole lot of carbs. I like apple fritters. Which is crazy now. I like the, I like the way they're made. I don't like the apple part. I just ate an apple. I like, I don't like my fruit cooked. I like raw fruit. If I'm gonna eat fruit, it needs to be raw. Now, I will say this. I have had mango, some kind of mango cooked up on my crab cakes. That was delicious and I think I was at Papadose, which I like Papadose. I love Papadose actually. Ooh, that sounds good. I feel like I need to go get me some Papadose today. Anyway, let's go ahead and get on with these Horoscopes brought to you by Notre Dame Stride and Michael Thasson for today, Thursday, December the second. We gonna kick it off like we always do. And that is with Aries. Don't be too quick to judge partners of those you work with. You gain valuable cultural knowledge through dealing with foreigners. Move forward if you want to turn your life around. Listen, you know, we're in that season, Aries, where everybody's about to make a resolution, some goals, set some things in order. Go ahead, you do the same. Move forward if you want to turn your life around. Now, what does that mean? You probably gonna have to give up some things. You probably gonna have to, I know for a fact you gotta change your mindset about some things because it all starts in the mind first. When the mo-, when you change your mind about things, the things you think about will change. Yeah, Wayne Dyson says something. I'm kinda paraphrasing what he said, but you have to, if you wanna move forward, you gotta go ahead and move forward if you wanna turn your life around. Alright, alright, Aries. Don't be afraid. Sometimes people are afraid of change. They're afraid to move out of the spot they're in because they're comfortable. You gotta get a little uncomfortable sometime when you're trying to make things happen. Trust me when I tell you that, that is nothing but a fact. Taurus. Don't overspend and give too freely to others. You'll be overly sensitive when dealing with your personal life. You could, you could solidify a relationship if you're planned, if you plan a special evening with your mate. Okay, listen, you look at you being all, all special and romantic. You wanna solidify it? Go ahead and plan something special. That, that could be the icing on the cake right there. That's what you've been waiting on. Go ahead, Taurus, don't be playing around. Do the thing. Get you some love in time for Christmas and bring in the new year with them. Yes, yeah, I believe in all them old, old, um, what's it called? Traditions. Bringing the, bringing the new year with the one you love and you with that person all year round. Yeah, that's an old tradition. I don't know, I don't know, it's probably just, does it work? I don't know. I've been bringing in the new years with the same person for twenty years. We're still together. So it could work, I guess. I don't know. Gemini. You need to refrain, refrain from being the genuine, generous one in the group. You need to refrain from being the generous one in the group. Work quietly behind the scenes for best results. Real estate investments will be extremely profitable in the long run. Okay, Gemini? Hold on to the real estate. I know it may look a little wacky right, right now. Let me just say this. If you have real estate right now, you, you getting big paydays. Big one, because people are losing their mind bidding above the price of what the property actually is worth at the time. It's just crazy. It's nuts. So if you holding on to some real estate right now, I would like now is the time for you to let it go because the money out there in real estate is nuts. It's bananas. I'm talking about houses that would normally be one ninety-nine to like four ninety-nine. I saw a house the other day. I know it didn't go for more than, and I should have looked it up. I know it didn't go for like more than two fifty. The house is on the market right now for four fifty. That's a two hundred thousand dollar profit to that person that bought that house. Even if they owe a mortgage. Even if they still have a mortgage on the house, they will come out squeaky clean, no less than one seventy-five. Just, that's a come up. The problem is where you gonna live unless you got a second house somewhere. Because if you sell your house for four fifty, you gotta go buy a house for four fifty. They may be saying, I don't care. The interest rate is good. I'm gonna have a hundred seventy-five sitting in the bank. I'm still paying about the same mortgage. I can see that. I can see that being the case. Yeah, because if the interest rates are good, even though the house costs a little bit more, you may be paying just a little bit more than what you're paying right now. But you got a hundred and seventy-five, two hundred thousand sitting in the bank. Now, here's the thing. Don't just sit it in the bank because it's not gonna make that much interest on it. I'm just trying to help somebody out. Cancer. Don't expect too much from others. Don't hesitate to come right out and ask the pertinent, ask for the pertinent information. Try to be as mellow as possible. Listen, don't expect too much from others today and you will not be disappointed, Cancer. It's when you put your expectations on folks that you become disappointed. And you become disappointed because they cannot reach the expectations that you have set because they don't, they don't even know they're supposed to be trying. So, don't expect a lot from others today. Just don't do it. That way you don't be disappointed. Try to be as mellow as possible. I don't know how you gonna do that, but whatever it is, try to be mellow. Leo. You are best to be discreet. Mm-hmm. Added ga-, added igno-, added knowledge will give you the edge when dealing with peers. You are best to look into investments that will grow in value over, over an extended period of time. I don't know what that could be for you. Consult with a, a financial professional, a financial advisor. Get some advice. Don't go on your own if you don't know what you're doing. Go get a, a professional to help you out, Leo. Because, you know, you, 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 you wanna make sure your investment look good and you wanna make sure that they can gain value over time. Now, that could be a bunch of different things. That's why you need to talk to a professional, a financial professional that can give you the sound advice you need to make the right investments, right? Alright, cool. Virgo. Get involved in creative groups. You will be in the mood for entertainment. Any intimate relationship with colleagues will lead to gossip that could easily affect your position. Don't gossip. Keep your business to, intimate relationships with colleagues? Yeah, listen, I try to tell y'all. You don't wanna have love on the job. I know, love is love. But sometimes when you have love on the job and it doesn't work out, that's a very awkward situation. I know because I've been there. Was not good. I had the, I had the new girlfriend coming to me saying, hey, I respect you. I had the ex-boyfriend coming to me saying, hey, I want you back. And they're in a relationship. Oh, it was not good. And I had everybody that we worked with who knew who we were, knew everything that was going on. Oh, it was not good. It was not good, y'all. It was, and then I was trying to date and I had the nerve to be trying to date somebody else at the job. Like, why would you do that, Audrey? Because I didn't know any better. When you know better, you do better. I would never do that again. I just wouldn't. It was just too awkward. Alright, I'm gonna go to a song. I'll be right back after this song to bring you more of the Horoscopes brought to you by Notre Dame Stride and Michael Thasson. Stay tuned. Welcome back, welcome back. It's your girl Audrey Bell Kearney bringing you the Daily Horoscope brought to by Notre Dame Stride and Michael Thasson. We gonna pick it up with Libra. You can bet that someone in a high position, position is watching to see how busy you are. You should put in some extra bonus, extra hours developing that creative idea you have. Educational pursuits can bring interesting, helpful people. Yeah, put in some extra hours, develop that creative idea that you have. It's so amazing. Once you get it done, you feel so accomplished. Like, do you have an idea and you see the idea through? When it becomes hugely successful, not, the fact that you saw it through becomes so gratifying. I'm telling you what I know because I do it all the time. When I need to feel like I need a boost, I need to feel high, I do a new project. I got this project I'm gonna be doing this weekend. It's, well, probably Sunday because I got a whole bunch of stuff going on this weekend. But Sunday, I'm supposed to be chilling, but I probably won't. I got this project. I got me some resin, you know, I'm gonna be doing, I feel so excited. I feel so alive. So, li- listen, Libra, put in the extra hours, developing that creative, creative idea that you have because it's gonna make you feel good once you're done. I'm just trying to help you feel good. Yes, put the good energy out there, bush. Scorpio. Don't depend on coworkers to help. They may only hold you back. Channel your energy into projects that will enhance your home. You may find group functions tiring. Eh, I know, it's always so many. I suppose I went to two yesterday and I was exhausted. Like, by the time I got from my meeting, I was exhausted yesterday to the point where I couldn't even do Why's Woman Invest podcast. That's rare. That's a rare, that's rare right there that I don't get, that I do not get to do my shows. I was so tired. I just wanted to just lay down for a minute. So, yeah, a lot of, and right now, you got Christmas parties, you got networking events, you got New Year's event, you got a whole lot going on. So it could be, it could tire you out. It really could. Scorpio. You may find that the extra cash will come in handy when the opportunity to invest comes along. Yeah. Travel will be a result, oh, oh, well, listen here, travel will result in new romantic attractions, not relationships, attractions, sorry. They might, well, the attractions could turn into a relationship. They could, they may. Work hard on improving your living quarters. Take care of your home because your home will take care of you, will give you a nice place to sleep at night and be sheltered. So take care of it. Show it some love. It needs love just like everything else. In the meantime, make sure you look your best while you traveling because you could get some new romantic attractions that may turn into new romantic relationships. I know, I'm a romantic. Capricorn. Get to the top if you're being harassed. Go to the top if you're being harassed to help back. Your own small business on the side sounds pretty lucrative. Be aware of any deception on the part of those you deal with. Watch your back. You got backstabbers. And if anybody's trying to harass you and hold you back, go to the top. And if that doesn't work, start your own, start your own business on the side and get out. Get out. Yeah, this is the time. Don't be afraid. So many people started businesses last year and this year because it was money floating around. They had unemployment to fall back on, which gave them time to actually start their business. Some people got deals because their jobs closed down. It's just a lot. It was a lot of money. Starting a business is a good thing. However, it takes a lot of commitment. It takes a lot of sacrifice. It takes a lot of leadership skills. You need to know how to lead. You need to create a culture for your company, you know. One of the things I'm, I'm excited about is how I'm gonna move noise. I got, I got two projects that I'm working on. I got two projects and two big clients. Three, three big clients. Three big clients, two projects. All big, everything is big. It's big, it's really big, it's big, big. It's really big, it's huge. Okay, I'm just, nah, I'm being funny. But, um, I got two. And one of them is expanding, is, is really expanding noise, um, in the podcast that we produce on here, bringing on more podcasters to be part of our network. So that's big. Uh, but one thing I know for a fact is that I wanna create a culture for my company where people feel like they wanna come to go to work. And when they come there, they feel like they're at home. Now, I'm not saying that I'm gonna be like this mushy boss because I'm not. But I do recognize that you need to be flexible. You can't be rigid. I don't, where, the way I roll, I like to have fun, right? And I want my, my company to reflect that, that I wanna have fun. I don't wanna be so rigid because I'm not rigid. You know, I wanna play music. I want to, um, have events, you know, so that's my plan. So I'm excited about that. And this other one I'm excited about, can't talk about it yet. Because it's in, it's in production. I can't talk about it. But anyway, anyway, I digress, I digress. Um, Aquarius. Unfortunately, your personal life may suffer from a lack of spare time. She's probably an entrepreneur, right, Aquarius? Yeah, because we don't have much of that. Avoid confrontations with coworkers who aren't pulling their weight. Do your things, do things with your children and avoid situations that make you feel as if you've neglected the ones you love. I know. When it's when you don't have that time, then you start feeling guilty. But here's the thing. Talk to the kids. Let them know what you're doing. As a matter of fact, get them involved. If you don't have, if you go to work and you gotta, uh, side hustle, get your family involved. That way they don't feel like they're left out. They feel like they're a part of what you're building and it gives them a sense of ownership and pride. So involve them in what you're doing, Aquarius. That way you don't have to feel like, you know what? They're suffering, I'm suffering because they're suffering. I feel guilty. Involve them. That's all. Let them do something. The kids are smart. If you got kids, my, my grand daughter is two years old. She can get on Instagram and Facebook and scroll through and, and swipe left, swipe up, swipe down. Don't like something, swipe, I watch her do this to the point where her mom said she can't get on TikTok anymore. She's like she can't get on, she's two. She's like, nah, she can't get on TikTok. Because she gets on TikTok and she says what she see on TikTok. It'd be pretty nice if they had a, a TikTok for kids. Because that way she can get on there and watch kids' stuff. There is kids' stuff on TikTok, but it's all mixed in there with adult stuff. So, and she likes music. She's been, she's liked music since she came into this world. She loves music and she would watch videos, but some of the videos are, are not meant for her to watch. So her mom won't let her watch TikTok anymore. When we realized that she was saying the stuff that was on TikTok, we was like, oh no, oh no, 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 no. So she can't watch TikTok. Last but not least, my fellow fish Pisces. Your partner will blow situations out of proportion. Listen, okay, you must make them stand on your own two feet regardless of how much you wanna make things better for them. Try to keep your head out, listen, listen, try to keep ahead of the game. Listen Pisces, listen fish, listen. Your partner is gonna blow situations out of proportion today, right? You can't control your partner. If they wanna blow that proportion, that's on them. The only thing you can control is you. Let me say that again. Your partner is gonna blow situations out of proportion. You cannot control your partner's attitude towards whatever's happening. Only thing you can control is you. So be prepared to handle the situation because you know it's coming because the stars have said it. As for me and myself, this fish right here, um, if it comes, I'm not even accepting it. But if it does come, I'm probably gonna look at it because I got a bowl tonight and I don't need that energy. I'm gonna look at it and keep it moving. Now, it may not be your, it may not be your spouse, maybe your business partner, maybe your workout partner, maybe it could be your business, it could be, it may, but it, whatever partner it is, just know they gonna blow it out, out of proportion. I don't know who it is. I ain't expecting it. I'm not. On the, on the, on the other side, on the flip side. Listen, they gotta stand on their own two feet sometime. I know we wanna help, we're nurturers, wanna help everybody, wanna help the world. Wanna make it a better place. I know, but they gotta stand on their own two feet. And while they're doing that, while we're letting them stand on their own two feet, we gotta keep our head, keep ahead of the game. We gotta be, pay attention to what we need to be paying attention to and they gotta stand on their own two feet. Try to keep ahead of the game, baby. Try to keep ahead of the game. You hear what I'm saying? That's why I'm always doing things. That's why. Yes. Alright, that's all the Horoscopes I got for you today. I'll be back again on Monday at 10 a.m. Sharp to bring you more of the Horoscopes brought to you by Notre Dame Stride and Michael Thasson. Now, let's get on with this news. Ah, yeah. So, I'm looking at the Gwinnett Daily Post. You can go there to gwinnettdailypost.com, check it out. Stacey Abrams, this is gonna be, listen, Fair Fight Georgia, oh, it's, it's about to be on the popping. We knew she was coming. We were just waiting for her to announce it. So Stacy is probably gonna be running against Brian and Purdue. Yet, ooh, it's gonna be a fight, y'all. This is gonna be an election cycle like the 2021. It's gonna be a fight. Ms. Abrams has announced that she is going to be running for governor for the state of Georgia. Oh my God, here come the crap. Oh, it's gonna be crap, crap, crap. Brian Kemp lost. He won. He stole it. He stole the election from her. So she started fair fight. And, um, now she's running again. So Abrams announced, woo, her announcement is a boon to the Democrat. Abrams ran for governor in 2018, losing to Kemp by one point four points. But her campaign vaulted her into upper echelons of the Democratic Party and made her a fundraising force who will be able to throw millions at a run. Democrats believe Democrat demographics and political changes in Georgia as evidenced by Doby's elec-, electoral victory. So, well, listen. Now we got to get ready for the nonsense because y'all know it's coming. They done redrew lines, you know, they done changed the, the time that you can vote and send your absentee ballot. Oh, it's coming. We gonna have to get people on buses. We gonna have to get people, listen, we gonna have to get Uber for folks, Lyft. People gotta get to polls. I'm just saying, we got, eh, listen, it's gonna be crazy. We, you already know it's gonna be nuts. Stacy, so we got Purdue, Kemp and, and, and Stacy. Yes, this is gonna be something serious. Ooh, yeah. You know Trump already said Stacy should have won. He said that. However, Purdue is his boy. So, because he's mad at Kemp right now. He's mad at Kemp. Purdue is his boy. But he sure said publicly when he was in Perry, Georgia a couple of months ago, Stacy should have beat him. So we gonna roll with that. Because you, because that means you feel like Kemp sucks. Yeah, here it is. Says, Trump's anger at Kemp is so deep that he has at times lauded Abrams as a way to attack the Republican governor. While speaking in Georgia earlier this year, Trump said of Kemp, Stacy would, Stacy, would you like to take his place? It's okay with me. Well, what, Trump, Stacy's, Stacy said yes. I'm glad you okay with it because now here it comes. It's gonna, listen, I'm going to a song, y'all. I saw that this morning. Listen, read, it's a whole article on Gwinnett Daily Post. Go to gwinnettdailypost.com and check it out there. She's running. This is what I'll be talking about on Popcorn Politics for the, yes, I got so much to do. Listen, be sure to tune in every Sunday at 1 p.m. Eastern Standard Time. We talk popcorn and politics at 1 p.m. It's show is streamed live on American One Radio, Roku, uh, YouTube, Facebook and LinkedIn. It's streamed live. We're live. Derek J. Wilson and myself are there talking politics. Sometimes we have guests, sometimes we don't. Here's the thing about politics. There's so much po-, so much going on in the world when it comes to politics and, and forget about it. Our state of Georgia is always in the news. Georgia is always in the news because Georgia's a powerhouse. Yes. Going to a song. I'll be right back after this song to give you more of the what's going on in and around Gwinnett County and beyond. Stay tuned. Welcome back, welcome back. It's your girl Audrey Bell Kearney giving you the daily rundown about what's going on in and around Gwinnett County. So, um, you know, we had elections on Tuesday, election year, and there was some, some people who, you know, ran, um, in, in the runoffs and they still had to do a count. So anyway, Duluth residents will have to wait another day to find out. Well, not another day. It's gonna happen today. They're gonna have to wait a couple more hours to find out who actually won the city council post, um, runoff, but post four. Yep, they were, they were separated by four votes, y'all. Four. Four votes. I think that is the, that is so crazy because think about this, right? Think about in the, in the, in the primary, you won. You had the most votes, right? You had the most votes. And then you had to do a runoff. And you're figuring, I'm gonna win and you're separated by four votes. Anyway, Manfred Grader and, and Brian and Brandon Odom. They both, they ran against each other on Tuesday night. Grader received four hundred and sixty votes while Odom got four hundred and fifty-six votes. So of course you need a recount. They're separated by four votes. It's crazy. Separated by four. Now, here's the thing. Once they do the recount, Grader could get some more of them votes. We don't know how that's gonna go. We going on to the, until the actual, um, until the actual recount is done today. And that's gonna be at two o'clock at Duluth City Hall. I know, I know four votes, that's crazy. But I tell you, but I've heard the runoffs, you don't wanna be in a runoff. So you wanna fight hard when you're in the primary. You wanna fight hard so that way you don't have to be in a runoff. It's crazy. It's crazy. In the meantime, in Swanee incumbent city councilman Pete, um, Chappenter, Chappentir was re-elected to Swanee City Council Post Five after defeating challenger David Martinez in the city's runoff. Yep, he won. He had six hundred and seven votes and, um, Martinez had five hundred and seventy-four votes. So he didn't have, there is no, you know, I don't think he's asking for a recount. He won. But that four votes, I can see why you would wanna recount. I want one, two, four votes separate us. So they gonna do the recount and we should know by the end of the day who actually won. So I'll be talking about that on Popcorn Politics on Sunday. So be sure to tune in. So be sure to tune in there, um, 1 p.m. Eastern Standard Time. You can tune in live on Facebook, American One Radio, LinkedIn, YouTube and Roku, streaming live. Derek and I are there talking politics for one straight hour, talking politics, most check it out. Primarica employees collect nearly 100,000 food items at the company's Canathon competition, yep. That's a lot of food items, y'all, 100,000, that's a lot. Primarica new business manager, Valerie Caldwell, and her team decided to go, go all in on the company's new competitive format to benefit the annual Salvation Army Holiday Canathon this year. Primarica decided to shake things up in the food drive, um, in its food drive effort this year, making a competition between the two, the two wings at its corporate headquarters building instead of simply placing the drop box, um, location around the office. I think that's what the police officers did too, they had a comp- I think it was Duluth against, was Duluth against Swanee? Anyway, the officers, they had a, um, they had a competition too to see who was gonna raise the most food. And I wanna say Duluth won, I can't remember, I forgot, but anyway, I think that's pretty cool. Make it a friendly competition, the, the goal is to get as much food and, and food possible to give to families that really need it and trust me, there are people out there who really need it. You wouldn't think so here in the state of, in the United States, supposedly the richest country in the world, um, but there are people out there who are desperate, in desperate need of food, right? So, the competition has raised, got a lot of food that they're gonna distribute throughout the, throughout the state of Georgia to help people, to do the Salvation Army to help people eat and have a nice holiday. One, it's one thing to not have food, but it's another whole thing when you don't have food for the holidays, when you don't have toys for the holidays. Speaking for, speaking of the toy drive, we're gonna be doing a toy drive at, um, Class Act Security Protection over in, in Lawrenceville. If you wanna stop by the office and drop off a toy, we're gonna be doing a toy drive and a food drive. Um, that's my client, Security Protection, uh, Security, Class Act Security Protection over in Lawrenceville, located at 3370 Sugarloaf Parkway, that's in the plaza right by the Publix right there, you got Brewster's and, uh, Zaxby's and Wendy's, if you turn in that plaza. Uh, so Class Act is right there, you can go by there and drop off food, drop off toys, um, because we're gonna be doing a toy drive. They can drive by the office and pick up boxes of food and gift wrapped toys, which I think is amazing. So be sure if you wanna do that, 3370 Sugarloaf Parkway, and that's in Lawrenceville, inside the plaza where the, where the Publix is on, on, and McDonald's is across the street, Zaxby's, Brewster's, and, um, Wendy's right there, cuz it's two Publix on, it's two Publix on Sugarloaf Parkway. I'm talking about the one that's across the street from the McDonald's, right? And there's a, and, and you turn into the, into the driveway, there's the East Side Medical Center right there, um, so right there, that one, not, not the one further up, the one right there, 3370 Sugarloaf Parkway. Stop by, drop off a toy, drop off some food, we're gonna create baskets and boxes and gift wrapped things, um, for drive by, drive by Santa, all right? All right, cool. All right, um, the cold weather is out there, y'all, it's beautiful today though, I ain't gonna even front, it is lovely outside, but, but we've had some very cold nights. And, um, there are people who may need some help with their, with their, um, gas and energy bill, and there's help out there for you, there, there, there is help. So, um, Atlanta Gas and Light is reminding customers of several ways to obtain assistance with their winter heating bills, and there are quite a few here. Um, they said, "We are committed to connecting customers with total services to identify available assistance programs and ensure that communities where we live and serve can enjoy the comfort and reliability of natural gas this winter." That was said by the president and CEO of Atlanta Gas Light, Pedro Cherry. Um, the agencies that provide services to, to those who qualify, you have to qualify for these agencies and there's a whole list of them, just gonna give you like two, but if you go to ajc.com, there's a whole list of agencies there. Um, the low income, low income home energy assistance program is called LAHEEP, helps eligible customers pay for their winter heating service and may cover certain cooling expenses for customers with specific medical needs, conditions, right? Because some people can't stand the heat. Um, eligibility is based on household and income. Enrollment begins yesterday, it began yesterday, if you got questions, you can call LAHEEP by calling 877-423-4746. Again, that number is 877-423-4746, it's called LAHEEP, call them if you need help. Another organization that you can reach out to is Heating Energy Assistance Team, HEAT, that's pretty cool. Um, the Georgia Department of Human Services distributes heat funds statewide to local community action agencies to households experiencing a potential loss of energy service or households that need service restored. Eligibility, um, or to donate, you can go to heatga.org, heatga, that's gaforgeorgia.org, or give them a call at 678-406-0212. Again, that number is 678-406-0212, and there is a whole list of them, y'all, I can't go through the whole list, but go to ajc.com and you'll see it there, you'll see Atlanta Gas Light offers up, um, helpful families, you'll see it there, and it's just a list of them and go straight down the list and get the help you need, okay? All right, listen, that's all I got for you, I'm gonna go to my last song, then I'm gonna come back and close it out with my word of inspiration for the day, so stay tuned. Welcome back, welcome back, so listen, guys, that's all I got for you today, but before I go, I want to give you my word of inspiration, here goes. And I don't think, I don't think I've said this before, um, but maybe, I don't think I have, anyway, here goes. Challenges are what makes life interesting, overcoming them makes life meaningful. Ah, let me say that again, challenges are what make life interesting, overcoming those challenges is what makes life meaningful. Joshua Marine said that he was absolutely right, challenges, if we didn't have challenges in life, it'd be a boring life, it really would. I know some of you would tend to disagree with me, but think about it, if you got up every day and there wasn't a challenge, people who don't have challenges, they live a boring existence, I'm telling you. Because there's nothing to look forward to, there's nothing to overcome, there's nothing to challenge, you just get up and it's, that's boring. Do something that puts you to the edge, do something that makes you wanna get up and say, you know what, I'm gonna try something new today, I'm gonna take this next challenge. To me, challenges, when, once you overcome that challenge, you feel amazing, I'm telling you. When you hit, when you accomplish things in your life, and here's the thing, set tiny goals, right? Cuz you just wanna get into, get in the habit of achieving small goals and then move it up to the next goal. Because each one of them, each one of those goals, they're gonna come with a challenge, right? It's the challenge, it's the challenge that feels good, and when you overcome it, that feels even better. So set tiny goals for yourself, put challenges in your way, put some challenges in your life that's gonna make you better, cuz I'm sure you can. No, none of us are complete, I don't care who you are, I don't care how complete you think you are, there's something in your life that needs to be worked on. I guarantee, I know, because we're not perfect, we're just human. So that's all I got for you today, could've been anywhere in the world, but you spent the last 43 minutes with me and I love and appreciate you for that. Be sure to, if you miss any episodes of this show, be sure to go to GoodMorningGwinnett.com to listen to past episodes there also. Also, if you wanna support the show, just hit on the banner that says, "Support the Show," just hit that banner and you can support the show. Thank you again for all your support, thank you for all my listeners around the world, I know you're listening because I see the numbers and I thank and appreciate you and love you for that. If you, uh, listen to this show on Apple Podcasts, find your favorite two episodes, give it five stars, leave me a comment, like, love and share the show and subscribe, most importantly. Follow me on Facebook at Good Morning Gwinnett, follow me on Instagram at Good Morning Gwinnett, and follow me on the Twitter at GMGwinnettTheNumberOne, GMGwinnettTheNumberOne. Be sure to tune in this Sunday at 1 p.m., we're gonna talk politics in depth, yep, 1 o'clock Eastern Standard Time, we're gonna talk politics. We're gonna talk about all that's going on in county, in the county of Gwinnett and around Georgia and probably around the world, so be sure to tune in. You can watch that, that, uh, listen to or watch that broadcast live on LinkedIn, Facebook, YouTube, Roku and American One Radio. So that's all I got for you, thank you again for listening, I really appreciate you guys, stay safe out there, I'll be back on Monday, 10 a.m., God willing. Until next time, my friends, until next time, my friends, make it a great day and have a wonderful weekend, bye, y'all.
You've been listening to Good Morning Gwinnett. Make sure to tune in Monday through Thursday at 10 a.m. Eastern Time to find out what's happening around Gwinnett. If you liked this episode, subscribe now and share with your friends. To learn more about Noise Media Network, visit noisemedia.us.